All right, ready?
Yeah.
Great. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order for Tuesday, June 26, 2018. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a whole bunch of meeting minutes to approve that go back a little ways, so I'm gonna run through those. I'll put a motion on the floor to accept the minutes of the meeting of Tuesday, June 5th.
Second.
Any comments, corrections? They should be in your packet in order, so... So this, there were two meetings on the 5th. There was a joint meeting and then this was, yeah, this was the special meeting.
Right.
Okay, any comments, corrections? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the special joint meeting with the Board of Education on Tuesday, June 5th.
Second.
Okay, all right, I made the motion. And this was the presentation. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Put a motion on the floor to accept the minutes of the Town of Bethel Public Hearing on water rates, water service fees. That was also Tuesday, June 5th at 6:30 PM.
Second.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. And I'll put a motion on the floor to accept the minutes of the meeting of Friday, June 15th, and that was to establish the date of the special town meeting that we had tonight.
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries.
Well, you gotta abstain.
Oh, yeah, you have to abstain.
Aye.
So, two ayes, one abstention.
You skipped over the 12th.
Oh, you know what, I got that out of order. Okay, so I'll go to the 12th now. Minutes of the special meeting, Tuesday, June 12th at 4:30 PM. I'll put a motion on the floor.
Second.
Okay, and this was, yeah, this was consideration of the canopy amount to pass to the Board of Finance. Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That carries, were you there?
Yeah, aye.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Oh, I abstained from that one.
Oh, you abstained from, okay, so that was again, two ayes and an abstention. All right, item number one for new business tonight is consideration of approval of a paramedic intercept contract. So to put this on the floor, I'm going to make a motion that we accept the proposal from the Western Connecticut Health Network Affiliates Incorporated, proposal for service, Town of Bethel Paramedic Program. Accept the proposal and authorize the Town Attorney to negotiate a three-year renewal agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and I would turn the floor over to Tom Galliford with the EMS Commission to run through the factors that led the Commission to recommend Western Connecticut Health Networks. And you guys have some paperwork in your packet about that, too.
Yeah, I could just kinda write up a little memo that kinda tell the key points the EMS Commission had and kinda read upon with it. Basically, the program we have now with the existing vendor, Western Connecticut Health Network, has been exceptional. There's been very few complaints. If there are any issues we have, we just deal with them right then and there and they get taken care of. So we really had no issues at all with the paramedic itself as far as the service they provided or any operational issues. There's a whole list of value-added services which I just gave you tonight that they do provide which really aren't part of the proposal or part of the contract, but there's a whole list of items that the paramedic program currently provides to us. Mostly, a lot of it has to do with police departments as far as maintaining their equipment in the police departments, A and Bs, first aid bags. They do a lot of training with the firehouse on Monday nights. We actually have a lot of gymnas training and they do a whole school of topics for us. There's quite a lot of the refresh training that we need every year for the police department. There's no additional charge for that. You know, they help facilitate and run some mass casualty drills. We do one several years ago at Duracell, a mass casualty incident drill. They provide a vol car and a trailer for mass casualties. It was just, it was just used, again, this happened again for the double fire alarm program by Kimbo Grace and they just sent email and asked for it and they provided it. They provided a third paramedic for the event, no additional charge. So it's just been, as far as those value-added services, it's just been exceptional as far as that service that they, the current provider gives to us. Again, being affiliated with Western Connecticut Health Network, which is a hospital, I think we all feel that's important that they're integrated with the hospital program as far as the services they can provide to us, it's part of the healthcare system. I don't know, I think we've asked any member of the fire department about the program and how it runs now. And I think really, I'll just go through these last couple items and then just kinda go over the bid package, too. There's two separate locations within the Danbury Ambulance Bid that, first, they were missing information, they did not include a roster of staff or the years of experience. We had to ask for that afterwards and it just provided a list of names. There was no years of service that they...
So they didn't, so just to back up a little bit, there were two bidders. There was Western Connecticut and Danbury.
There was three. The other one, we, they, I guess the procurement community didn't really look at because they just gave an hourly rate. They really didn't have any...
They didn't propose a service, okay.
They didn't have any actual budget breakout rate for the service. But, you know, a couple sections where it says, so the citizens of Newtown or the town of Newtown in it, we're obviously sure of the town of Bethel. They actually stated, Danbury Ambulance said that their turnover rate is over 50% for their employees, which we thought was rather high.
A concern, yeah.
A concern. But, you know, I don't know how the technology that worked with the procurement committee as well, whether they backed up, into a consideration as far as the technical areas in there.
What was the, what were the bids between the two?
Well, the difference is about, the first year is $51,000 difference and then it's $49,000 and about $47,000 difference. With Western Connecticut Health being more than, you know, that amount more than the Danbury Ambulance bid, but just to note, in the Danbury Ambulance bid, they just say in here, their proposal is one dedicated paramedic to the town of Bethel on a 24-hour, seven-day, week, 52 weeks in a year basis. They don't mention anything about a backup paramedic, which we currently have a backup paramedic that covers 100% of backup calls. And they actually currently provide about 99% of third paramedic calls currently. But the Danbury Ambulance bid does not mention that. They just say one paramedic on a 24-hour basis. So there's no, there's nothing in here that says that they're gonna provide a backup paramedic to us, which is important because currently we work with the town of Reading.
Yeah, let's go back to this town of Reading. You know, it's always been a hot button with me. We provide a vehicle, but we get nothing out of Reading and that's been just an irritant to me because basically, you know, it's our vehicle and they're not contributing anything.
Actually, I'll address that. I apologize, I didn't, I didn't mention that before.
All right.
Reading has agreed in writing to share a prorated cost of that. So we take the cost of the vehicles, you know, all three vehicles, cost of maintenance and fuel and insurance, and total that up on an annual basis and then prorate their call volume, which currently, last year was 22%.
22%, right.
And they pay that share. We'll invoice them yearly and that...
And they've agreed to it?
Yes.
Because last time when we bought the vehicle?
Yeah.
They were not about to contribute anything.
No, they agreed to it. I received an email last week from Julia Pemberton, the First Selectman, and Bob Kozlowski confirmed that their comptroller called him to say, "We've programmed this into our 2018-2019 budget." So...
And we're still buying the vehicles?
Yeah.
Or Danbury is?
No, we, the town, yeah, these are based on the town of Bethel providing the vehicle and the equipment for the radios and the, some of the basic medical supplies, like the light pack, the ALS monitor. So that would go by the town of Bethel.
Yeah. Well, they pay for that, their share of that, too. Yes.
The Danbury ambulance, where they gonna...
So there was two options in the bid. One was to, as, providing the equipment that the town owns now and then a turnkey operation of them providing all the equipment themselves. So, Western Connecticut did not provide a full for that. Danbury Ambulance did, which is the turnkey, so that was...
Well, that was more expensive, I think.
Yeah, it was, it was more, obviously, about $50,000 more to provide their own equipment.
Yeah, but what is the cost to town to maintain, to buy and maintain? How, what's the turnover with the machines?
It's about $30,000 a year and Reading will pick up $10,000 of that.
So then tucked away in the very back of the VA bid, so there's an option in the RFP, you know, which, so we kinda put it, you know, providing the service just for us and providing it kinda as a regional program with Bethel and Reading. So, Western Connecticut just kinda provided one option, which was the, which kinda included the Reading program because they're only assumption they're gonna continue their program with Reading. So if they continue their program with Reading and continue with us, that's kinda how they put their proposal because they can kinda pick up their costs. And it's better for them because then they can provide a paramedic service to two towns for a lesser rate than if they were just providing it just to us.
Does Reading have their own paramedic or is it...
No, they're using, they're using the same, the same paramedics on the same schedule that we use, so they're contracting separately. But Western Connecticut Health is proposing this based on the assumption that they're gonna provide service to Bethel and Reading simultaneously like they do now. So tucked away in the back of Danbury Ambulance's bid is the regional program, which would assume that they're gonna provide service to Bethel and Reading, and it's $100,000 more because they put $100,000 in here for regional responses. So if you really take the Western Connecticut Health bid at, say, $378,000 for the first year, which provides for service to Bethel and Reading, the Danbury Ambulance bid is actually $427,000 because they add $100,000 for that regional response. So in the end, it still ends up being, Western Connecticut ends up being a cheaper program because of that, which this is tucked away in the back that, I don't know why I put that in.
But the major concerns you had was the lack of certification information?
Right.
Of the staff and the high...
Yeah, they didn't provide any information about their staff.
And the high turnover.
There's some technical errors, there was, yeah, and the high turnover turnover on that. And really, when you look at it from that perspective...
That was De Simone, right?
That regional program is actually more money for Danbury Ambulance than it is for Western Connecticut Health, kind of about $50,000 more.
I mean, was there any consideration about putting the, I see they had two paramedics in here, but did you seriously look at that, that if we did put two paramedics on the ambulance, it would reduce the call, the EMTs?
Yeah, that wasn't part of this bid package, but the Board of Selecting Commission has studied for that and I don't know if we ever got the final results.
Yeah, we did. I have, I have memos. Let me see which one you're looking at there. This one is...
This was what we had from...
Yeah, from when, from the Gersha Group.
Yeah.
So do you have these in your packet?
No.
It should be in the folder. There's two memos from the Gersha Group.
No.
Okay, let me give you this one. Okay, the first one...
It's the one stapled together, Paul, underneath that first packet. No, not that packet.
That's it.
Now, that's the sustainable, really, stuff.
I think those are minutes.
Okay, look at, the, a year ago, we did a study. We had Mr. Gersha, who used to be the Emergency Management Director for the State of Connecticut and now runs his own consultancy group. We had him analyze the call volume of both of the fire departments.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, all right. We had him, had his group do a study of the call volume of both of the, two ambulance service, the two basic BLS services and the paramedic intercept service. And we asked him to model the fees based on current insurance reimbursements, Medicaid and Medicare reimbursements, and we asked him to model, do a financial model in two different manners. One would be putting a paramedic on each ambulance call, or at least most ambulance calls. And this, the assumption in that one was that we would maintain two separate ALS services, but we would realize a higher reimbursement rate because the paramedic was on the call. However, as you can see from the memo of the state of June 25th, 2018, I had him rerun the numbers because the numbers, because there were some new Medicare rates. We don't have enough call volume to make that financially feasible. The town is currently subsidizing the paramedic program to the tune of $275,000. That's what's in our current budget that was just approved. And you can see that at the exact same call volume, we would, we would lose, we'd have to bump that subsidy up to over $900,000 to run a paramedic on every call with two ambulance services. Now, I did ask him to, there's a second memo, this is dated August 27th, 2017. This is when he first completed the study. The assumption in this one, you'll see that there's a shortfall listed of $585,000. The assumption that I asked him to work with is, what if we got both of the two volunteer companies to combine their, combine their system into one, the way Newtown has? So you had one combined unified ambulance service instead of duplicating the services and then put a paramedic on every call there. So you'll see that that's a lot more efficient, but it's still not as, it's still, it's still more than twice as expensive as what we're currently doing. So the subsidy to have, even if, I mean, it would probably take at least a year to negotiate and put that together if, even if both fire departments wanted to combine, and I don't think that there is a desire to do so at this point, but having one unified ambulance service with a paramedic on every call would cause us to double the subsidy. So therefore, my recommendation is that we continue with Western Connecticut for the, for another three-year contract. And it is, it is more expensive than the second bidder, but based on the, the quality of the service and the reliability and the questions about qualifications of the individuals who could, who would be manning the service, I, I'm inclined to go with the EMS recommendation to stay with Western Connecticut.
All right, but in the future, I don't know if they'll still be here together.
Yep.
But maybe, Tom, you certainly might be here. You know, when this contract starts to wind down, let's revisit this again and maybe have some serious discussion with the fire departments and police departments about maybe combining to see if, you know, that will work. You know, I understand, you know, we're down to the wire now on this one here, so...
Tom, you're seeing, in your house, there are an increase in ambulance calls each year, right?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it fluctuates, but 2017 was probably a record year first. We had over 1,000 calls and we're running a little bit behind that this year, but it definitely has reached a point where...
Is Bethel having a very same type of increase?
Yeah, they're very similar, yeah. I mean, we have, we, well, two years ago, added Maplewood.
Yeah.
Eighty-seven bags, Alzheimer's care patients.
That's a daily run for you, isn't it?
Yeah, and that actually is mostly BLS, all the basic life support. The paramedic doesn't get called a lot of those because they're just from slips and falls where we have to transport because they cannot provide a refusal, they can't refuse treatment because of their mental state. And so they're not traumatic, all of the traumatic events, so a lot of those calls are just, just the basic ambulance tool, the EMT, going out of paramedic. So it's increased our call volume, but it hasn't increased or, you know, contributed to revenue with the ALS.
Not, you know, off the subject, but if there was a paramedic on that, if we had a full-time paramedic on that ambulance, would they get reimbursed for it?
No, 'cause if you wouldn't, so if you had an ALS service with a paramedic on your ambulance, you would have a paramedic and an EMT, that would be your legal...
Right, right.
So they went over to Maplewood for a fall, that would be, the paramedic would make a determination whether his services are needed, his skills are needed, which based on our data says he wouldn't. So that would just be a basic life support transport where they're providing just BLS services where the paramedic would either be in the back of the ambulance just providing regular EMT level service.
But there would be no additional...
You build as that. But you're paying free of paramedic. You know, you're paying his hourly rate or the service of the paramedic. We're not getting, we can't bill for this service because he didn't provide.
Nothing going on.
No, yeah, it's...
What if we had one EMT and one paramedic on it?
Right.
When the call comes in?
Yeah.
Those two gentlemen have to go to the hospital with that person.
Correct, yeah.
But what you're saying is you can't bill for it.
Yeah, unless that...
It's not a life support...
Right, the paramedic's not providing ALS service.
Right. That was, that was the factor that drove that up.
Yeah.
Is that you can't...
You don't need them every call.
So you can't, you can't bill, we were thinking that we could bill all the time for the paramedic.
Only, yeah.
All the people's required.
Just like now, they responded, a fly car, they may get on scene and may downgrade it, say, "You don't need my services," so the EMTs will transport BLS and there's no bill.
And there's no...
Only for writing.
And there's no bill for that, right?
There's no bill for that.
Right.
Only for transports, either ALS or BLS.
Okay.
It's a, it's a very complicated system, that's for sure.
Well, still trying to find ways to make it cost less.
Yeah, no, and, you know, and we're trying to, the two-part departments are trying to, you know, collect revenue and get our revenue better and we're both doing collections now for those that haven't paid, so it's, it's helping a little bit.
Yeah, you have a new billing company, right? It's changed billing companies last year?
Well, they merged with another company, yeah. So it's all a little bit better.
You know, sometimes we hear comments about that now. Do you take people to court or after two tries, it goes away?
No, so now we do collections, so if it'll go, then they can write letters, they can appeal deflections and we make a determination of that, you know, if the person had passed away and they had an outstanding balance, things like that, so it's kind of a case based.
What is it, call, what is it, call, how much does it cost? Just for the basic?
A BLS call, I think it's around like $580, $600, somewhere around here. So they could double for the ALS. And then, and again, depending on the type of insurance you have, whether you're Medicare or Medicaid, they give a reduced rate, so it's less than that that we get reimbursed for, so...
Good.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? That motion carries. Thank you very much, Tom. Item number two on the agenda, and this is something new. There is a program, which you have a PowerPoint presentation, and I'm not gonna go through it, you can read that at your leisure. This is called Sustainable Connecticut. What this is, is, it basically is a program that provides recognition for a community for taking actions that decrease pollution, increase efficiency, energy efficiency, increase beautification efforts, increase pedestrian and cycling safety, increase road safety, et cetera, et cetera. It costs nothing to join. It's basically simply a prestige factor that looks, it portrays the town in a positive light. All we have to do is pass a resolution saying that we join it and then we turn over reporting once or twice a year to a committee of volunteers who have graciously volunteered upon my asking them to volunteer, and that would be a committee of Beth Kavagna, David McCollum, and Janice Christianik. There could be, in the future, grant monies attached to some of this. It probably wouldn't be a lot, but it would be for things like downtown beautification projects and so on and so forth. It's kind of like the green energy program expanded to other areas. So I thought, there's, there's no harm in, in joining this and actually, we have already done so many of the things that are part of the program, such as opening up the solar farm and the energy efficiency program that we've done in all of our school buildings. Our streetscape program is part of it. We might already be certified for the first level to get the little badge that we can put on the website. So I wanted to put a resolution on the floor that would allow me to go online and simply say Bethel is part of it.
Okay.
So, I'll just, I'll just read the resolution. Well, this is actually a letter. Oh, here it is. "Whereas, Sustainable Connecticut is a comprehensive statewide, action-oriented voluntary certification program built by and for municipalities with the vision that sustainable Connecticut communities strive to be thriving, resilient, collaborative, and forward-looking. Whereas Sustainable Connecticut is designed to boost local economies, help municipal operations become more efficient, reduce costs, and provide grants and additional support to municipalities. Whereas the Town of Bethel embraces an ongoing process of working toward greater sustainability, selecting which actions it chooses to pursue from the voluntary menu of actions provided by the program. Resolved by the Board of Selectmen at the Town of Bethel that we do hereby authorize the First Selectmen to serve as the Town of Bethel's Sustainable Connecticut contact person for the program and resolve that to focus attention and effort within the Town of Bethel on matters of sustainability. In order to promote the town's local initiatives and actions, the Board of Selectmen hereby establishes an advisory sustainability team comprised of the Economic Development Director, the Director of Planning, and the inland, Town's Inland Wetlands Official. Resolve that the first meeting of the sustainability team must be held within 90 days of passing this resolution." So, anybody care to put a second to that?
Second.
Second discussion.
Yep.
Just briefly, you know, I like the three people that you got on there, but what about maybe Chamber of Commerce people?
Oh, okay.
Involved in that because, you know, they're deeply involved in...
That's an excellent suggestion. I'm absolute, well, I will, I will ask them, because we could, we can put somebody on. In fact, if you want to right now, we can just, we can, I can expand that to a Chamber of Commerce representative to be named, I don't have to have the name. So I'll amend the motion to include Chamber of Commerce representative of their choosing.
I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. And the last item, because this is actually items two and three. This is resolution of, the resolution and the Sustainability Committee itself, kinda combined them into one motion. So item number four is consideration of the Municipal Solid Waste and Recycling System Agreement.
My favorite subject.
Your favorite subject. And I thought, I had a HRA board meeting yesterday.
Yeah.
Now, Paul, you had asked about possibly going alone or, you know, leasing out.
Right, or having Wonder Brothers run it.
Well, here's the problem. We talked about this, I think, at one of the previous meetings and I put a, I've got a, yeah, I've got a thing in there. The, the nation's recycling material, the vast majority of it, something like 80% of it, for many years has been going to China for reprocessing. China will no longer, China stopped accepting our recycling. It has nothing to do with tariffs or anything like that. This happened about six or eight months ago and it has thrown the recycling markets into a complete tailspin and it's no, for, at least for the present and for the near-term future, in fact, maybe the medium-term future, it's not possible to make money on, not only is it not possible to make money on recycling, but the cost of disposing recycling is going through the roof. So there was a memo that just came out of HRA today about mixed recycling tip fee increases. If we were to go outside of the HRA system and in any way, shape, or form, whether we leased it out or had, or turned it over to somebody else, we would be bidding on the open market and the tip fees that we would pay to get rid of our cycling, the quotes are running from $55 to $85 a ton. If we stay in the, in the HRA network, that drops to $10 a ton and all the management is taken over. So it, no, the other, the other factor is, being part of HRA is a separate issue than who runs the station. Like, at some point in the future, let's say, our two employees both decided to retire, we could, we could have a management firm come in and take over at that point and still be part of HRA, take advantage of the loan.
That's what I was thinking of, you know.
Yeah. So they're, they're actually two, two separate things, but I, I think it's important that we get ourselves locked into this contract because towns that don't have this kind of a mutual agreement are gonna be paying an awful lot to get rid of stuff because there's no money.
Or if they can get rid of it all.
If they can get rid of it all, that's right.
Yeah.
Right. So this contract would go from 2019 to 2029? So, and, and we're guaranteed to, those prices are, are locked in. There are mechanisms for inflation adjustments, but they're, they're very, very strict. So it can't go up by very much. So right now, we're paying forty-five dollars a ton to get rid of recycling and eighty-five dollars a ton for MSW. MSW with the new contract will stay at eighty-five a ton, but we'll get a seven-dollar rebate per ton. And the recycling cost will go from forty-five dollars to ten dollars a ton.
I remember the meeting specifically with the HRA representative. Question comes down to that we have to address at a future meeting is looking at our containers, our containers. And there's the question of, the truck is, is so ancient, you know what I mean? It would be cheaper for Winter Brothers just to pick it up and rather than us buying a new truck there. But at the same time too, if I recall correctly, she said, a single stream is frowned upon and now we want to go to separating everything.
Let me clarify that, that it's, they don't have to separate everything, just glass. The, yeah, because glass is the contaminant that's, that's messing everything else up.
Okay.
So they are, they are, HRA is now working with the haulers. And this is another reason why it, it's in our best interest to remain part of HRA. Because the haulers are going to be asked to ask their customers, because right now, the, you know, the trucks have two bins. There's waste and recycling.
Right.
They don't have a third thing. They don't have a third bin in the truck. So they're going to have to ask their, under a state law that was passed just this last session, they're going to have to ask their customers to segregate glass and not put it out with the truck. And they're literally going to ask their haulers to maybe do one special run once a month just for glass. Or if they don't want to do that, then take it to your local transfer station. So we'll.
Yeah, would it behoove us to start separating glass and tin cans and everything else?
Well, we have an interesting opportunity because the only thing that needs to come out is glass, but everything else can stay single stream. So cardboard, newspapers, all that other stuff, plastic, tin cans, that can start going in one bin as long as the glass is separate. So now that we kind of know what the, you know, if you remember, for the last two years, we've been holding off on any decisions about that because we didn't really know what the future of HRA was and if our relationship would remain. So now that we know which way it's going, we can make those investments, I think.
Well, because I know we have to address it very shortly.
Yeah.
Those containers.
Yes.
I've seen their better days.
Well, I can, I, talking about things that could be seen, I can see the ground right through the floor of the container.
Yeah.
I'm surprised stuff doesn't fall out while it's on its way.
They hold it out, right.
Right. So I'm going to put a motion on the floor that we approve the proposed municipal regional solid state waste and recycling agreement between Pousatonic Resource Recovery Authority and Town of Bethel, subject to Town of, Town approval, Town of, Town Attorney approval. So is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Marty, have you read it all?
I haven't read the entire contract between Winter Brothers and, and HRA. But I've read, I've read this agreement, similar to last, the last one.
Yeah.
And I've got some notes on it. It doesn't, I, I don't see anything that's a problem.
Okay.
And it's only ten years.
Ten years, right.
Ten years, that's.
Yeah, thirty. Yeah, not twenty-seven or twenty-five. All right.
All right.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve HRA. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries. And we are, that concludes.
The contract, I do have the contract if you want to see it. It's like four hundred pages.
No, no. I'll leave that up to you.
All right, I'll second.
It's unbelievable.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much. Thanks, Tom. Thank you. What, what's your name?
William, William Walling.